Good morning and welcome to the Finance and Governance Committee Meeting Number 202511, which I declare open. The councillors' attendance, myself councillor Tully, councillor Nicole Johnock, the deputy mayor, councillor Marney Doyle, councillor Jim Madden, councillor Andrew Antonelli is online, and two other councillors who are not members but who are in attendance, councillor Pi Augustine and councillor David Martin. There is an apology from the mayor, councillor Harding. Would someone care to move the... we grant her leave of absence in accordance with the motion on the screen. Councillor Madden moved, councillor Johnock seconded. Is there any discussion? I'll put that motion all in favour against councillor Antonelli.
In favour.
I'll declare that motion carried unanimously. I'll invite councillor Johnock to read the acknowledgement of country.
Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people.
Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest in the agenda today? No, thank you. Any business outstanding? It's noted here as nil. Thank you. Would someone care, on confirmation of minutes, to confirm the minutes of the Finance and Governance Committee Number 202510 of the 20th of November 2025? That's moved councillor Madden, seconded councillor Doyle. Any discussion? I'll put that motion all in favour against councillor Antonelli.
Yes, in favour.
I'll declare that motion carried unanimously. Officers' reports, this is item two. Public interest disclosure policy review. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? No. Someone care to move the adoption of that report? Move councillor... Oh, sorry councillor Antonelli.
Yeah, I did have one question in relation to the matter. Does the... Does... Actually, just to the CEO if I may.
Okay, this is to the CEO. Yeah, thank you.
Is the... The ability of a person to give... To be declared under the... or given opportunity under the public interest disclosure policy, does that extend to councillors as well, does it?
Sorry, just make sure I heard you correctly councillor. And so your question is, is the ability for a councillor to make a public interest disclosure open to councillors? Yeah?
Well, is it open to councillors, I guess is probably the truth.
Yes, it is through the chair. Yes, it is. Yes.
You're right with that?
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you for giving your response. I appreciate that.
Okay, we got to the point, this has now moved councillor Doyle, seconded councillor Johnock. Discussion. I'll put that motion all in favour against councillor Antonelli.
In favour, thank you.
I'll declare that motion carried unanimously. Item three, the lease renewal over trust land at One Mill Street, Rosewood. Is there any ques... are there any questions of the relevant officer? Yeah, would the relevant officer come forward please? Thank you. Oh, do you think we do? Okay, well, probably we should close now. Yeah, just hold on for a second. Yeah. I'll move that in accordance with section 254 J3 of the Local Government Regulation 2012, and in particular paragraph... G, would that be the appropriate one? Yeah, commercial matter. Yeah, section 254 J3G. The meeting moved into a closed session to discuss this item listed on the agenda. Is there a second of for the motion? Second to councillor Madden. Any discussion? I'll put that motion all in favour. Councillor Antonelli, it's unanimous in the room. Councillor Antonelli? Councillor Antonelli, we're just...
My apologies.
Yeah, no, we're moving just to clo... might move into a closed session.
Yeah, no, in favour, my apologies. I was fumbling for the mic button.
Okay, thank you. I'll declare that motion carried unanimously, and we now move into a closed session. Thank you. We're now resumed from the closed session into the lease renewal over trust land at One Mill Street, Rosewood. Just before I call for a mover and second, I'll acknowledge councillor Madsen, who's arrived at the meeting, and he's a member of the committee. Someone care to move the adoption of the recommendation in item three? Councillor Madden, seconded. Councillor Doyle, discussion. I'll put the motion all in favour against... that's carried in the room councillor Antonelli.
Ah, yes, affirmative.
I'll declare that motion carried unanimously. Item four, acquisition of easements for Info 5136 East Ipswich Catchment Stage Three Drainage Project. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? No.
If I may.
Oh, sorry?
If I may, Chair.
Yes, which officer?
I would imagine the officer handling...
Oh, it's Alicia again. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, just hold on for a second. Just the name and position please again.
Good morning councillors, Alicia Raitt, Property Services Manager.
Councillor Antonelli?
Ah, yeah, my question's quite simple, and thank you Alicia for coming back. I'm just wondering, have we had any word from the property owners as to any concerns that they have? Or has the process been quite... everyone's been happy with the process?
Sure. So with this particular project, it was acknowledged that there were some easements in place, but the purpose didn't align with the project work. So the consultation process has been going for many months with the Asset and Infrastructure Services Department and their stakeholder engagement. I believe it's all positive. From our property services perspective, we haven't commenced any of the formal engagement with these particular owners on the interest in land. But they are aware that there is a requirement.
Yeah, I do understand there's some complexities in this matter. I was just wishing to determine whether or not there was a significant concern from the property owners. But if you haven't spoken to them like this, we'll just have to wait.
There hasn't been anything raised at this point in time. We can report back through the process, but this is to commence those sort of formal negotiations.
Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions of the officer? No, thank you very much again.
Thank you.
I think that... oh, you, you never know. She might be back. Would someone care to move the adoption of this recommendation? Moved councillor Johnock, seconded councillor Doyle. Discussion. I'll put the motion all in favour against... that's carried in the room councillor Antonelli.
Affirmative.
I'll declare that motion carried unanimously. Item five, procurement, significant contracting plan, electronic security services. Are there any questions of the relevant officer?
Again, I do have some questions, Chair.
Who's the relevant officer? Who's the...
I guess it's more to do with the contract itself, because it is a complex contract.
Yep, come forward and then ju... just be a minute or so councillor Antonelli. Thank you. If you just state your name and title.
Cheyenne Ward, ICT Category Manager, Procurement.
Thank you councillor Antonelli. We can't hear you.
Yeah, my apologies again. Look, I just note the complexity of this matter. Obviously, when you read through the report and the associated documents, it does specify that the contractor's looking for strategic security services that relate to the maintaining of the Safe City network and the asset protection and corporate security. Now, they're two quite different services in many respects. One is about public safety, one is about our... the protection of our assets. So they are... they are reacted in two different particular ways, and our corporate security. So I guess my questions relate to the fact that in the... in the attached documentation, it specifies the fact that we may be looking at a number of different suppliers. Can you please explain how that would work?
So we will go out as one tender, because the services are connected in terms of what we are seeking, the maintenance of the cameras. But we're leaving it open for two contracts to result from that. So like you've said, we've got one separate portion being Safe City, which requires certain accreditations for the suppliers to be able to manage and maintain that portion. And then the other portion for the corporate cameras and corporate security. We identify that they are two distinct areas, but because the services are connected in terms, the market response will be the same. We put one tender out to reduce the administration for the suppliers and for council, leaving us open for two suppliers to win.
Yeah, thank you for that. So it is quite possible that there may be a sole provider?
Potentially, yes.
Or multiple providers?
Yes.
And just for the sake of clarity, and I'm not sure whether you can answer this question, but the security officers we have walking the Nicholas Street precinct, where do they sit in this particular... Where do they sit? Do they sit within the Safe City, or do they sit within the the asset protection and corporate security area?
I'm not entirely sure. That's a separate contract, so I'm sorry, I can't answer that question.
Not being in attendance, Chair, is there anybody else in the room that can assist with that inquiry?
Yeah, yeah, we have, yeah, coming forward. If you just... I will be able to clarify that councillor.
Thank you.
Just come forward. Thank you. Just the name and title?
Yeah, good morning, Tim Steinhardt, Goods and Services Category Manager.
Thank you. Did you hear the question?
So in relation to that question, the physical security services that we have in Nicholas Street Precinct and councilwide, and the Safe City camera monitoring is a separate contract for security services, whereas the electronic security services is for, I guess, the maintenance and installation of the equipment which they use to provide the feeds for the camera network, they're separate. So, yeah, there's two separate agreements.
Does that clarify that, councillor?
Yes, thank you, Mr Steinhardt. So just again to clarify, the present contract for the Nicholas Street Security is separate to what we're seeing here today.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions at all for any officer? No, thank you.
Thank you.
That's good. All right, someone care to move the adoption of that recommendation? Moved councillor Doyle, seconded councillor Johnock. Discussion. I'll put the motion all in favour. That's carried in the room councillor Antonelli.
In favour, thank you.
I'll declare that item carried unanimously. Thank you.
Excuse me, Chair. If I may, we've got a bit of a technical issue going on, I think, with the audio. It seems to be transmitting through... well, it's coming across as distorted. It's quite distracting for Deputy Mayor and myself to really hear.
If I turn my...
It's when councillor Antonelli talks, and it's coming through one of the... yeah.
Councillor Antonelli, the audio of yours is distorted, I suppose, is the best way to describe it. We're just not sure. It's coming through a speaker. Well, just try to resolve this. We're nearly finished this committee.
Sorry, Chair, it's just very difficult. Yeah.
Just on that point, Chair, I am having difficulty hearing councillor Antonelli. I'm just wondering if he could be closer to his microphone, perhaps might help.
Did you hear that councillor?
I'm actually wearing headphones, so I can't be much closer than that.
A little bit, okay.
Was that hurt?
It's a bit better, I think.
That'll do for our last item, I believe. Thanks, Chair.
All right, we're on item six, procurement, recommendation to award group training organisation. Are there any questions of the relevant officer? Councillor Madsen, and could the relevant officer come forward please? Good.
I also have a couple of questions.
Okay, thank you. Your name and title, please.
Good morning, Chair. Deputy Mayor, Councillors, Matt Smith, General Manager, Corporate Services.
Thank you councillor Madsen.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, Mr Smith, what controls are in place to ensure that local people are given, I guess, sort of priority access with the proposed measure?
In terms of the recruitment process for retaining the Chinese councillor Madsen, I think? Yeah, so we work quite closely with the provider around that. It is one of the pieces we'll put in place with them. Certainly, the goal for us is to ensure we maintain local level employment. The provider that we've chosen also has a local presence here, working directly with the community. They've already involved in a couple of projects in and around Ipswich and the surrounding areas. So certainly a critical part for us, and we'll be working quite closely with them. Expressing our desire to en... ensure local is obviously important for us, but local is a critical part of that recruitment process for us.
All right, councillor Antonelli?
Yes, I hope my audio's coming through a bit better now. Just with reference to your last statement there, Mr Smith, the... I did take the opportunity to look up this organisation, and the name was familiar to me, but I did want to have a look and see if there was any local offices. And according to their website, their Brisbane office, which is the only office in this proximity, is not an office at all. It's actually remotely managed by appointment only. That's as it stipulates on the website. So can I have some further clarity on that?
Yeah, sorry councillor Antonelli, not an office in Ipswich, but they actually have an officer or officers that are located in the region, that work in this region, specifically dedicated to the area. So I'm not particularly familiar with their corporate office structure, but through this process, they've identified, and we've been able to work through with some people that are placed in the local community that work for the organisation that are dedicated to this area.
I guess my concern is if they don't have an office, how do they formally operate? Then is that a concern for us, that they don't have a formal office?
Not a concern that we've identified through any of the process councillor Antonelli. We've done a fair bit of review and work. This organisation works with a number of other councils, particularly South East Queensland councils, and they've reference checked very well in terms of the service provision with those councils. And one of the key criteria we worked through with that was their work in the local community as well.
Look, I'm satisfied with that. They are national, so they do have a number of locations and operations around the country. I guess my... and we're not... we do not have in front of us the whole procurement process, but if I can ask a simple yes or no question, were local operators, providers, did they actually submit an application?
Yes, one. I can confirm councillor Antonelli, one local provider did provide a submission. The procurement evaluation criteria covered a broad number of areas, not only local, be that local presence or local office, but a number of other considerations in terms of the nature of the service, particularly... but a number of other considerations in terms of the nature of the service, particularly work with trainees, um, as opposed to other qualifications like apprenticeships, um, in addition to, uh, safety being a key consideration in terms of the safety. So they have accountability, shared accountability with us for the safety of the workers that they employ, so that was also a key consideration in that evaluation criteria as well.
And my final question is, uh, obviously as a rather large organisation, um, is there any evidence of? Or did they, uh, uh, in, within their, uh, application for this, um, did they suggest that they would be subcontracting? Uh, any of those sorts?
Uh, no, not, not.
Outsourcing them?
N- not subcontracting or outsourcing councillor Antonelli and I would need to double check to be a hundred percent sure, but I believe they would need our permission to do that under the contract anyway.
I appreciate that, uh, advice, thank you, and that's all my questions.
Thank you, councillor Madden, did you indicate you had a question?
Question, um, is there waiting, when, when somebody tenders and they said, you know, this is going to cost a hundred thousand dollars, is there any sort of waiting, um, whereby local businesses, you know, there is an adjustment to take into account the fact that they're a local business?
A- absolutely councillor Madden, there is a local Ipswich, I, um, couldn't tell you the ins and outs of that, uh, specific criteria for this evaluation off the top of my head, but could certainly share that with you if you'd like.
May, may, maybe you might better explain it this way, is it a monetary waiting or is it an item waiting? Where they, they tick the box better because they're local, is?
No, it's an, it's an individual criteria and assessment that's based around a number of things, not just their local presence in terms of whether they have an office or employees based in the city, but also their contribution to the city in terms of other benefit that we might get from them for the city as well.
Okay, uh, those are my questions Chair, thanks.
Thank you, are there any other questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Someone care to move the, um, adoption of that recommendation, move councillor Madsen? Move?
Sure.
Second, councillor Johnic. Discussion. I'll put that motion all in.
Sorry Chair, I'd just like to suggest, um, I tried to talk to the general manager about it last week and we didn't find a time to further discuss the matter, um, prior to the council meeting, I'd like to actually receive some, um, further information on the evaluation, I just want to make sure that everything's being done to make sure that local people are given priority, um, for those training positions.
I guess probably all the councillors would like, like that shed, um, if you're going to do that, yes?
Yeah, and then probably, that should at least probably include the information about which councils the preferred tenderer actually works with.
Certainly, any other discussion councillor Doyle?
I was just going to say, and, and the, um, local buy policy that we implemented would be helpful as part of that discussion.
Yes. Okay, any further discussion? Oh, thank you, I'll put the motion all in favour, against, that's carried in the room, um, councillor Antonelli.
In favour, thank you.
I'll declare that motion carried unanimously. Are there any notices of motion? Any matters arising? Any questions or general business? Thank you, just in conclusion, um, on behalf of the members of this committee, I extend our best wishes to fellow councillors and to the staff in particular of the, um, who, um, come to this, um, committee and the, um, and the staff who are related to the general managers, um, who work for them, thank you for, have a merry Christmas and a safe and prosperous new year, and we'll be back, um, we've got the council meeting at the end of next week and, uh, the, uh, regular meeting in the last week of January. There'll be no committee meetings of course, then, um, I'll, I'll suggest that we, we just, a normal close and then there is a, a private matter that, uh, I'd like to, not related to council business, I just wanted to discuss with councillors. So I think if we just have the normal, unless you wish to perhaps take the formal, um, morning tea adjournment now and be back at a particular time, ten fifteen, is that sufficient? Okay, I'll move that the, um, what, what's the, I don't want to say next committee, what's, what's the next committee? Community and sport committee meeting commits at ten fifteen AM. Is there a seconder? Uh, councillor Doyle, uh, discussion, put the motion all in favour, that's carried in the room councillor Antonelli.
Affirmative, thank you.
Okay, that's, uh, carried unanimously, the meeting finished at, uh, ten fifty, nine fifty, nine fifty eight AM, thank you. Nine forty eight.